All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Sessions, Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's ten oh four AM. My name is Time Answer, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier to my left, Commissioner Caroline Mepia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus participating virtually. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have a few topics, but first up is an executive session, so the live stream will be paused for that period of time, and we have thirty minutes estimated. It's an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party. In public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. The specific topic is appeal of a hearing examiner's decision. We have Scott Cushing from our prosecuting attorney's office to join us and discuss the issues that are needed. So at ten oh five, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I was just, did you say thirty minutes?
Yes.
But then we can't come back in session if we solve this problem early, can we?
Do we want to make it shorter?
I think it could be shorter, but...
It's already on the agenda for thirty minutes, though.
Oh, okay, if it's on our agenda for thirty minutes.
Commissioners, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, so this, we dealt with this issue last time. This is not necessarily a, this is a deliberation of the appeal of the hearing examiner decision that the board held. I can't remember the date now, but this is not subject, this, the deliberations that the board undergoes here is not subject to the OPMA specifically, so it's not necessarily an executive session. It's just, it's not subject to the OPMA because we're discussing the deliberations that the board is having with respect to the hearing, the appeal. So that's under a different statute, I think we shared that last time.
So we're not locked into a half hour, or we just?
Amy, since it says on the agenda thirty minutes, they can do it, go shorter, right? Yes, Chair, you can go shorter if you'd like. Okay, well, when we come back, though, we are under OPMA, right, to take up items two?
Correct. Yes.
I guess Commissioner Fornier's point is that folks might be going, oh, that's gonna start at, you know, ten thirty, because...
Understood.
Yep, okay.
So I'm a little...
Better stick with it, we'll just take a break.
Let's just stick with that, then. Even though, but let's make the point that this is not, that it's not forty-two thirty-one ten I, one I, as I just read out, it's a different statute, and this chunk of the meeting will be closed for deliberation on the hearing examiner appeal. So can we, at this point, stop then, or?
Right, it's ten thirty-seven AM. Are we back on?
It's just on here right now.
Okay, I can be heard. Okay, it's ten thirty-seven AM. We are out of our closed session regarding the hearing examiner's decision and we are taking up item two, county-owned Carpenter Road property discussion.
County manager. Thanks so much. As we discussed last week, Steph has been working with Horizon, the Coheed Village complex, and conceptually looking at property on Carpenter Road. And so we've done some initial engagement. I think we've reported out, the commission asked to make sure that the city of Lacey was involved. So we've talked with the city manager and are looking to try to schedule a joint meeting with some of the council members. That meeting got, we had a meeting scheduled that got pushed out, but prior to scheduling, trying to schedule it again, just wanted to come back and make sure that we had direction from the board on the disposition of this property. As I think we went out there and did an initial site view with Horizons, some of the property owners saw county vehicles out there and asked some, one of the commissioners' office what was going on. And I don't know that this actually came from formal direction. And so I just want to make sure that we are getting that formal direction because things like this travel out in community. I don't want any of you to be blindsided. So with that, I'll pass over. I know that we wanted to make sure that Commissioner Fornier was part of this discussion. And so happy to see if there's any questions or comments about this.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a real value of, you know, give some kind of a, it looks like a good piece of commercial property and it must have some substantial value. I'd like to know what that value could be.
Yeah, we need to do an appraisal on that property. And if the commission directs us to do that, we can absolutely have that done. At this time, though, I don't believe we have an official appraisal on the property. And so speculating at what the value would not be helpful, but we can absolutely do an official appraisal.
Does that cost money?
Yes.
How much does it cost to do an appraisal?
I'd have to look. I'm not sure.
Are we locked in to?
No, there's not.
Anyone? I mean, I'll go ask some commercial folks if they're interested or...
Yeah, no, we're not locked in. I think in this discussion, though, in talking with the city and talking with Horizons, again, just it'd be good to have that formal direction from the board saying, yes, continue exploring this. The next step would be visiting the site and visiting the Coheed Village development with members of Lacey City Council. Of course, we'd open that up to any commissioners that would want to attend, just so that we can get an overview of the project, so that we can talk to Lacey about what their perspective is on density on that site.
Do we know where the city limits actually run around there and where their projected plans are for annexation?
I don't.
Because it's in the urban growth area for Lacey, I believe.
You can get that information.
I just think it's all pertinent information to see, you know, I mean, it could be a revenue producer. That's kind of the way I look at things.
Sure.
In my mind, like, talking about any type of project there would be, is kind of, would be preliminary. And I, if I recall, we did hear from Public Works and they said that they don't necessarily have a use for it, but I don't, you know, I would want to revisit that first because I know that they've used it in the past. And I don't know if they were just, they were saying that because they were trying to, like, kind of look in their crystal ball and kind of please the, you know, please folks. I don't know if they truly have a use for it. If they don't have a use for it, then I would want to know, you know, a little more about what that area is zoned for, what's appropriate, and what the value of the property is. And then the questions I had earlier is, I think it's what, it was owned by the road fund or something like that? Isn't that the...
Right now, the property is listed under Public Works. We would have to check and see what fund actually paid for the property.
Okay, so that would be something I would be curious about, too, because like I said earlier, if it's like, if it's like a utility, then you can't just give it away. You'd have to, if you were to, you know, transfer it from one group to the next, you'd have to make the, you'd have to make Public Works whole, or you'd have to make the utility whole. Like, what are the, you know, if it's owned by some utility-type thing and, you know, we were talking with some group about giving it away for nothing, and we have to then pay back the utility, you know, the 1.5 million it's worth out of the general fund, that would, I think, be an important discussion to have first.
So can I just seek some clarification on what you're saying? I just, so what you're saying is if this was paid from the county road, whether we sold it or whatever we did, we would have to, if we sold it, that money would go into, let's say it was county road fund, right? It would go back into the county road fund. It would not go into general fund.
I'm saying let's figure that out because there's potential.
Exactly.
There's potential that that's the case.
We need to check into that.
Okay.
Yeah, let us, let us research that. I think what I'm hearing is that we can get all these questions answered, come back and have that conversation before we're seeking direction one way or the other, unless there's other input from commissioners.
And I think when it goes to that discussion with Lacey, what's their future plan for that particular area? I mean, brought up zoning, and I suppose that ties in, but what's their long-range plan? Let's, let's not throw a wrench in anything. Let's not be premature, I guess, is the way to put it for me.
Well, I know for Lacey, one of the things that they were requesting for this property was for us to donate to animal services for their location, right? So that was one of the, their past suggestions.
And maybe we could do that in lieu of a payment into that organization if we're going to keep going with them. You know, so we got to get some benefit out of it.
Yeah, we can definitely round this up. It'd be great to get direction. The board wants us to do an official appraisal of the property, so we can bring that information back.
What do we have to do if we were to put out a speculative bid? Is that even possible? But, you know, sometimes you'll put something on the ballot and see if the public is interested. Well, if we put a speculative bid out there, maybe it wouldn't cost us anything to do that. We could have quite a few folks, depending on the zoning, say, well, I'd be willing to give you $2 million or...
There's some kind of, like, you have to do like a yellow book appraisal or something. There's a prescribed process that you have to do to get the value of public property when you...
There, there, I'm sorry.
I don't know. We can research the process here, but in my other context, we would put out properties to see if there's folks interested in what those, what those thoughts or concepts were. We normally did that after we knew the value of the property, though.
Or could we even advertise it as a public hearing? What's the public think about it? A lot of different options maybe we can do.
So there are state laws regarding counting process on disposal of properties.
I don't know what those are.
So we need to take a look and see what those are.
Yeah, we just have to do some research for you. That's a direction from the board. We're happy to take that. And I will pause a conversation with Lacey City Council members until we can bring that information back. If I'm hearing direction from...
Well, I wouldn't mind hearing what they've got in mind as well as part of that information gathering.
Yeah, no, but I'm talking about the direct, where we were on track to meet with them to talk about Horizons project. I think until we do this research, unless you're correct to me to continue that, this research would probably precede us meeting with them.
I don't think we could have a conversation with them before those other things are answered. Otherwise, you're walking in without all the, you know, all the facts. Like, what fund owns it? What are the legal obligations that we have to that fund to ensure that it's whole? And then, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, I just... You done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I guess from my standpoint, I'm interested in the Horizons project and I, but I'm, I understand that there are some questions about the property and the fund that, so I don't mind pausing, I guess, conversations until we get more information on it. Kind of where I'm standing, though, is I really, just based on what Horizons has already done in our community and what they're doing in other communities and seeing the need, you know, I'm interested in, in that direction. But of course, if it's something where we would have to make, you know, I'm concerned that if this was bought with a specific fund that is, and it's tied to it, that, you know, then we're not as flexible as, as we initially thought we were.
Mission close.
I was kind of going to say something similar to what Commissioner Mahia said. I am really interested in the Horizons project as well. And I also understand the need to, like, look into these other things. I think Commissioner Fornier's suggestion is really, it's really proactive, so I appreciate that suggestion to look into whatever fund might be affected. But I'm wondering, because county manager, you said that there was a meeting scheduled with Lacey that didn't happen yet because it got moved?
Yeah, they, they had a scheduling conflict with their council members.
Okay. And was that for the tour that was planned on the night? That's because I had printed out the email just to make sure I had all the info.
Yeah, I don't have the date in front of me, but there was a tour scheduled.
Okay. I don't see any harm in, like we say, pause conversations. I don't see any harm in continuing to set up a tour, just so that they have... I don't see any harm in continuing to set up a tour just so that they have an idea, Lacey City Council members have an idea of what these projects look like. Because I participated in a tour a couple of months ago and it was really helpful for me to understand what Horizons is doing and how they're helping other communities like the veterans community out in Shelton. And, um, so I'd be interested in like still continuing to set that tour up.
I'm not interested in, in doing that until I get direction from you that you actually, how you want to dispose the property. Because my experience is, as we have those conversations, starts to build expectation. And if there's, what, what's abundantly clear today is there's a lot of questions that when this item originally popped up, we, we as staff haven't answered for all of you to even make that decision. That's what I'm hearing right now anyways.
Are you guys talking about two different types of tours, though? Because like what I'm hearing Commissioner Claus talk about is a tour of what Horizons has done, like the one out in Shelton and, and learning about that. And what I think I'm hearing the County Manager talk about is touring this specific site. And that wouldn't make sense unless we have all the answers. Because then you're, you're setting up potentially false expectations if you're talking about this site. But, so like encouraging Lacey to go to look at the Quixote Village in Shelton and understand that veterans community, that makes sense. But until we have answers to, you know, what this site is and can be and is beholden to, it wouldn't, in my mind, make sense to take people around and kick the tires on that site.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that clarification. I am talking about the tour of the one in Shelton, not this tour of the site.
Okay.
But did I hear you say kind of the same thing I did about how there's, I mean, would there be any point in setting that up, just the tour of the Shelton site? I mean, I don't think that sets any expectations.
I thought we did that a while back.
Not for us, she's talking about Lacey. I think that would be up to Horizons and their council if they want to do that. I mean, we can make the suggestion of you can take the tour and, and, um, this is what we learned from it. We found it very useful, suggest that you do it.
You can go to Tumwater if they want, they don't have to drive to Shelton. It's the same model, it's the same thing. They don't know what it is. I'm just, for me, th- this site, it's not, to me, the Lacey input was just input as to what, like, it's not like, it's another piece of this, like, you had a list of things you want to know and I have that same list and I also want to know what Lacey's thoughts are and I don't see why that all can't proceed. Because it's, because if they, if they, they're interested in Jazzcom or they're interested in, you know, a denser, what I heard from Rick Waugh, that was that they were thinking about maybe a more, a denser housing project than what a tiny home village provides. So there's three different things right there. So just, I don't see why, and we're going to need to know that.
Because when I spoke to, so the answer why is, when I spoke to Rick about this site, his response was, let's take some council members out there to show them what you're looking, what you're thinking about. It's in that moment of what, what are we thinking about was...
I'm not sure what we're thinking about.
Was the conversation that came from the board about Horizons. But the board never gave direction that they wanted to proceed that. My other concern is that Horizons started talking about if they were going to build a project in the county at a couple of meetings, Robin intervened and asked them to stop because they got ahead of themselves and were announcing that. That caused some community concern. Rick reached out and said, hey, are you guys moving forward with this? I said, no, we're trying to get you to have that meeting that you wanted to have. If I could have this conversation just with Rick and say, hey, what are your thoughts? That would be absolutely fine. But his comment was, well, I'm not opposed to it, but it really depends on a couple of council members and their input. And so that's where he wanted to do two things. Look at what they've built and then look at this site so they could understand, based on what has been built, what would happen here. Because from the density standpoint, and that's something that our, our staff, our CPED staff was also tracking, Chair, was that there was a density concern. And that's what we were trying to round up in this conversation with, with Rick. But from a process standpoint, yes, we can say, Rick, go and visit the Tumwater site if your council members want to have a sense of what's, what they can do. We can absolutely make that recommendation, it's up to them if they want to take it. But on process standpoint, it sounds like we have a lot of questions to answer, which are, which are good due diligence questions for all of you to have. I'll bring that back and then from there, we can decide what are next steps. That would be my recommendation.
Just, to me, it didn't sound like the questions that were being asked will take very long to answer. So I just don't, I just want to keep this moving. I mean, I'm fine to have all this stuff. I don't care what sequence it happens in, as long as it just kind of happens.
Yeah.
You know, because this has been, I, I was first approached about this like nine months or a year ago. And, and this Carpenter Road property was a hot button object, uh, thing like two years ago. So I'm really surprised we don't know who owns it and what the zoning is and where the UGA boundary is and all that. I'm frankly surprised that Lacey City Council doesn't know all that because they certainly weighed in with a lot of opinions when we were thinking about putting RVs there. So, um, I just don't see why, you know, it's like the attitude of like, oh, you know, here we are a year later after this has been coming, oh, there's all these questions to answer, let's set up a nine-month process. No, I mean, let's get these questions answered tomorrow and let's have a meeting with Lacey on Friday and let's, let's just figure this out.
This should be in a folder somewhere with all the answers in it.
Yeah, I mean, that's all my frustration. I don't care how we sequenced all of this, but this has just been kind of, you know, just ran, this property's been in the crosshairs of community interest for three years now.
And I appreciate that. I'm not saying that these questions can't be answered, that they're unknown by staff. I just don't have staff here to answer those questions.
Yeah.
So we can answer them tomorrow if we have the answers.
Yeah, I was being...
And we can bring it up for city, what I'm, what, what I'm saying is, I want, if we're going to go down the Horizon path, I just need, need to make sure you guys are giving us the direction to do that.
Understood.
Because it came up more as a topical, let's explore it. And as we've started to explore that, and really the meeting with Lacey hasn't been at our delay, it's just been tough for Rick to get his council members together. And when we thought we had a meeting several weeks back, that took us about two months to get. That meeting fell through. And so rather than go through another process and delay, or for it to pop up unvetted at our joint meeting that's coming up, Chair, I want to make sure we get those questions answered for you.
Okay, sounds like you've got a good list of things to figure out and then we'll bring this back up for discussion.
Yeah, I can do it quickly if the team has the information, which I think they should.
Okay, perfect. Can you listen to that item? Okay, Commissioner Items is up next. Is anything, Commissioner Edwards?
Where are we at on, I guess, the capital forest with trees and whatnot? I'm getting a lot of input from the community about that, yeah. So is there anything new on that?
Uh, the Legacy Forest issue?
Yeah.
Oh, um, so, uh, I have a meeting Thursday, I want to say. Uh, I've got a draft like of a potential response. We have to produce a response to the Board of Natural Resources this month. And I think we're going to, we have a, I don't know when it's scheduled, but...
This week.
We wanted a work session with the board. I wanted to have that, there's one more meeting that I need to have and I think it's scheduled for Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday. And I can sort of finally tweak a draft that you, that then I'll, I'll circulate for discussion and we'll decide what to discuss as a board, whether we want to send that or something else. It's just my, it's just my first shot at, at what a response might look like. You guys may have other ideas.
Next week.
Yeah, but, yeah, and I want to get that, and I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing chatter that it's, the earlier we can get it to the board, like, they're going to have a meeting in early October. The earlier we could submit it, the better, so that the members of the board could, could read it and just think about it and maybe lead to a more fruitful discussion on their part in October. So I'm going to be hopeful that we can, you know, discuss this and, and come to some agreement, whatever it is to send to the board sooner rather than later. But that's all coming hopefully in the next week.
We have a meet, just for clarity, we have, you and I have a meeting with a couple of groups this week sometime and then from there, we can definitely bring it back to the board for their direction.
Yeah, as soon as possible. I, I would, I'll need a day or two after that meeting to just incorporate whatever I hear and I've got a stack of, of, of thoughts to continue. I mean, I, I'm close to having it, but I need to finish that meeting and give me a couple of days. So I would think by the end of the week, I'll tell, look at the County Manager. By the end of the week, I'll give you what I've done and then you can decide how quickly we can get it to the board for...
It's not all in me, so we can be discussing this, Commissioner Edwards, by next week. Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah, I was, I've been checking the calendar in regards to a follow-up executive session in regards to the pending investigation. I, um, mentioned I still have a couple of questions that I would like to request investigator, but I do not see it scheduled and so I'm wondering if we need to make a motion to have one? Because I, I do still have questions that I would like, like to ask, um, some things that I would like to clarify.
Sure.
So is that the direction that we need to give you? Because I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah, we took, um, Tuesday's conversation based on how it ended with the request for an executive session to the PO's office. Their response is that to wait until there's a final written report until the meet again. I explained to them that I think, I believe the board wanted to meet to get some of the conversation and points that were delivered to them at the last executive session for those, they had questions about that and wanted to deliberate a little bit more on that. And so Amy's been trying to get that scheduled, but we learned today that they are saying to wait until the report is out. So if you would like to give the direction to have that executive session, then we will carry that through and get it scheduled. We do have time Wednesday. I think we don't have a, an agenda for meetings and so we were holding some, some space. And we can make that request known, that's the will of the board, to the PO's office to have the investigator ready to have that conversation.
And there was also that attorney from the risk pool.
Yes, we wanted both there, sir.
And, yeah, and I didn't know who was making these decisions because some of the advice that I had asked for additional clarification on came out, came from her, out of her mouth, so...
I'm, I'm, I have those questions.
Make sure she was involved.
Yeah, I have those same questions. It'd be good for those two to, and in the right, um, you know, capacities to speak to both, to, to the four of you about how everything's been framed, the information, some of you have questions about the information. You know, I think we, my perspective is, I think we ran out of time in the last executive session.
It was also a lot of information to like gather.
Motion on second, and then we could...
Okay.
Was that a...
Yes.
Second, the motion is what?
To move to have a follow-up executive session in regards with the investigator and the attorneys.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Um, I just, for whatever, you know, in regard to what you said the attorney said, if, even if, like, we're calling for some type of executive session and legal has an opinion about like, hey, whether it's timely or not, I feel like they should be coming to that executive session and making that argument and not in an email to the County Manager. Like, it is weird to me that if the, the board sets up their meetings and the, our meetings and the board sets up when we're going to have a discussion or executive session on something, not the attorney, we're their client and we call for them to come in and advise us. And it's just, it's absurd to me that they could say, well, we don't want to do that right now or, uh, no, kick that down the road. In my mind, if they want to say, hey, no, 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 that's, this is not the decision-making point yet or the discussion-making point, then they should come to the board and say that.
Explain it.
Yeah, that, not, it, it, not hide behind an email or, that, it's just, it is, the way the system works with legal representation in counties, having to use an independent elected official's office and sometimes they provide legal advice and sometimes you feel like you're like a burden to them or it's not convenient. That just, it is, I don't, it seems like a weird, broken system that doesn't work right, but I guess that's a different topic.
Commissioner Claus? I thought I saw your hand.
Oh, um, I was going to ask, do we know, do we have an estimate on when the written report will be ready?
I don't have that at this time.
That'd be a good question for the executive session. We weren't given a date, but we were given a timeframe of a week. They said about a week.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an exact...
Tomorrow.
Yeah, it could be. That's why I don't want to say a week out and then you get it tomorrow, because this is being livestreamed. I don't know, but I don't, I don't think it's too far away.
Okay, so, uh, all in favor of the motion to have a Wednesday executive session, say aye? Are we saying Wednesday or are we saying when we can schedule it with all of us? Well, we know we have that time for the board on Wednesday, I don't know about that.
But the attorneys, like, and the investigator, I don't want to schedule an executive session and not have the people that need to be there, not be there.
This week? Wednesday or at the earliest.
At the earliest convenience.
Possible time thereafter. That motion, uh, I think I heard four ayes.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
And you pause.
So, thank you.
That motion carries. Other Commissioner Items? So I've been, for the last like couple of months, I've been on the WASC, LSC Subcommittee to talk about revenue options for counties. And we're looking to come out with some recommendations to put on the, the WASC legislative agenda. And with just, just regards to revenue, and these are the four options that we're moving forward. This is our preliminary kind of report that we'll be giving to the broader LSC Committee. And I wanted to just throw it at you guys and say that I'm available for discussions or if there's any feedback or any, anything you guys have for me on this subject. Just please let me know and, um, take this and chew on it or throw it at me.
I, I guess, are we, we have a discussion on that, Chair?
No.
Uh, sure.
On the raise the property tax cap from one to three? I, because this has been a longstanding issue and problem. If, if there's a hope of getting there, is three too much? You know, we're going to make an incremental stab at it. Does that get it shot down? So there isn't going to be a chance where two, maybe, has a better chance?
Yeah.
I just bring that...
Yeah, this, this, you know, they're looking for a path forward and they're looking for things that are politically feasible. There, there may be further discussion that says, no, that's too high. Uh, or, you know, 1% is not enough to be, you know, to move the needle anywhere. There were lots of other options that were talked about. Some of those were thrown out. It was really interesting because they tried to put together a, a fairly representative kind of Subcommittee from all across the state. And it was interesting to hear the arguments from some of the smaller counties and, you know, things that, that might help us but wouldn't help, you know, the, you know, more of the membership of WASC. So these are the, kind of the four distilled down recommendations. And there's, you know, this is going to go to LSC and then it would have to go to WASC, I think, for further approval and, you know, based on kind of staff recommendations. Some of those things, you know, there, there might be some things that are just framing a discussion that they also know may not go anywhere, but they have to fight for it too.
I, I guess, a follow-up to that might be, uh, looking at Robin, possibly the 1% that we have now when we do enact that. What's the dollar amount that that brings? Is it like 800,000 or something?
It's roughly a half a million.
A half a million?
Two and a half.
So if we went to three, we get a million dollars, let's just say. And, but the state and all the other components that get a piece of it, don't they get a lot more out of that percentage? I don't, I don't know the breakdown. I mean, of the 1% that we're getting now, aren't other entities getting a big, bigger piece of that or no?
No.
There's that comp, that complicated formula that you come out with that gives me a headache every time. And I'm just wondering how that affects others, the state, the school districts, the fire districts, all that.
So all of the jurisdictions that have a regular levy are subject to the 1% cap?
But the state's not, right?
State exempted itself for a number of years, but that sunset, so they do, are again under the 1% cap.
So there is going to be more pressure to change it, to bump it up, it sounds like. I just wonder if...
I don't know.
Half million or a million and a half is, is it really an adequate solution to what we need? I...
Think the, we have often, in the quest to raise that cap, have encountered, um, the opposition says that we have plenty of capacity.
If the voters will vote... If the voters will vote for it.
Exactly.
And they're probably true, we have about as much capacity as you can have right now, don't we?
We've got almost a dollar in capacity.
So just to put the scale, sense of scale to that, like, so a million dollars extra would be coming from the one to three percent. And if we're, for example, required to double the amount of public defenders, um, you know, I, I'm thinking that's gonna cost far, far in excess of a million dollars. Or, like, a million dollars would cover four deputies, like, pre-public safety tax. Would have, would have paid for four new, um, officers, but we need like twenty-something. I mean, District Court wants, you know, I mean, just. Commissioner Edwards' point is, is really on point. I mean, it's, it, it's just, I focus on that a lot because it's so silly, given the, you know, the obligations that counties have and the, and the finance, but it's really not the so, solution.
It's a, it's a low-hanging fruit in a way, because it's just, it's just conceptually so ridiculous, but it's not.
It's still hard to get across the finish line.
It's really hard to get across the finish line and, and if we do, it's not gonna solve our problems.
Right, it's not gonna solve it, it's gonna aggravate a lot of people.
Read flexibility is in here as well.
Yeah, that's interesting.
That one was, was talked about a lot and, you know, they, they felt like they could make an argument for it. Whether or not it's successful would be another issue.
Graduated read.
I think whatever we need is available to us, but we need to develop trust from our community to get the public to vote for it. That's kind of my, that's my, that should be my theme song as I check out, I guess.
I know that this is also a priority for the cities, uh, in their legislative priorities, so they're going to be, um, also pushing this from, from their end. Commissioner Fornier, I've got roped into, um, we've had similar meetings for county roads, uh, and county road funds and the availability of the transportation budget, um, in relation to the state and, um, and so I will fill you in on those requests, uh, because they're gonna be brought up to LSC as well. So just so you're aware of them.
How, how about the utility tax? What kinda thing are they thinking about? We're putting in, in, infrastructure for high-speed internet and all that. I mean, that's, uh, that's a big push nationwide.
That's one I totally don't understand and it was like, that was one that came up at the end of every meeting when I was having to hop into another meeting down here. So I'm, I am still trying to like wrap my head around what exactly, uh.
That's gonna entail.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good though.
Cause there were things talked about like broadband and, you know, but like what specific utilities.
Did you guys get into the cannabis tax and like?
Yep.
So like, I mean, I've never really.
That's recommendation number four.
So I've never really studied that, I mean, like, what is it?
Almost nothing.
There's a lot that the state takes that we're.
Right, and what is that funding from the state? And like, I mean, like, if we're saying, give us, you know, you're giving us two percent, give us twenty percent, like, what would that take away from? What does the state do with that money?
It goes to general fund.
Just goes to a general fund?
Well, that's, that's my read on it. It was supposed to go to education. Well, it does go to education, cause it goes to the general fund and general fund funds education.
Or underfunds.
Yeah. So.
Is there any real, like, does anyone feel like that there's any real chance of getting?
I don't know. Those opinions were all over the board, right? You know, like, so there were some ones that people were rallying against, the, you know, the BNO tax suggestion was one that nobody was really keen on, there was a bunch of business owners that were in there. There were some that, you know, folks say, well, we fight for this every year and, you know, while we've been unsuccessful every year, every year there's a different legislature and that's how it works. Sometimes it's a different group of people and the right ideas get across the finish line and you make that argument every year until it, till it gets there.
Utility thing, like basing it on something to do with technology and, I, I think there is something there that we, we're putting a lot of tax money into creating that service to be available, so. Suppose it makes sense that we collect something on it. More discussion to come, sounds like, though.
All right, well, thank you for this before. If I was first to see. Okay, any other Commissioner Items morning?
I just, so for next, next week, right, we're, I'll, I'll be attending the WASAC conference. I'm seeing the Timber County Caucus meeting is in relation, in relation to a boardwork session. And so I'm just wondering.
Which one is that?
I was, I was planning to be there. I know Commissioner Munster, you're the representative for that one, but I just.
I was not intending to go to Ellensburg, I was intending, intending to zoom in to the Timber County's caucus as much as.
Okay, that's not, when is the conference then? I'm like super confused, cause then I have a board of directors meeting coming up, so maybe I'm confusing it.
It's just the board of directors.
Okay, never mind.
But they, they usually stack those together so you can make a day of it.
On, on Thursday, right?
But we've divided those out.
It's not the conference.
Wednesday.
When is that, when is the county leaders? Okay, I'm confusing my months. Never mind then.
We do have a boardwork session, so I may miss part of the Timber Counties. I don't know what's on that agenda.
It's a budget work session, that's kinda why I was like, I thought it was the conference date and I was like, well, I think most of us are gonna be there, so. But never mind. Never mind.
Talking about the WASAC conference?
Yeah, that's no.
But never mind, it's.
I, I, I guess just as a discussion on, maybe for my benefit, are we still contemplating some changes with the budget, with interaction with the auditor's office? Is there anything that is kind of in the works, hasn't been solidified yet?
I think maybe, maybe it's back, um, and the board wanted a work session on that, so.
So we'll have that discussion at that point.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, eleven sixteen, we're adjourned.
Sir.